And, good evening, everyone. I would like to call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. Prelude music, it says Temecula Conservatory of Music. Now, I know we're going to be doing a presentation for the conservatory, so who's here from the conservatory? So, everybody wave, okay, so we'll get to you in just a minute. This evening, we'll have our invocation by Rabbi Yonason Abrams of Shabbat of Temecula Valley, followed by the flag salute by Councilmember Comachero. So if you could please stand for the invocation. Rabbi, how are you?
Good evening, everyone. I bring with you the greetings and blessings from Rabbi Horowitz, who I think almost everyone in the city knows, he's suffering from ALS right now, and he still remembers Temecula and he still thinks of you, so I want to bring you regards from him.
Send our regards.
Definitely. I also want to mention that tonight, there's, is the 191st anniversary of when the second Chabad Rabbi was released from prison in Russia. Now, you might ask yourself, first of all, what is a Rabbi doing in prison? And, second of all, what does that have to do with any of us here today? And, the answer, first of all, is that if it weren't for him coming out of prison, there wouldn't be a Chabad of Temecula. But what I think is more important, and that's specifically for everybody in the city, is that it's actually a reason for all of us to celebrate. Think about this, that 191 years ago, Rabbis were put in prison for following their religion and teaching. And today, I'm invited to the City Council to give an invocation, and this is something that we should all cherish, as part of our country, as part of our city. Dear God, I've been invited today to the City Council to invite you into this City Council meeting. This City Council represents the Seventh Commandment, that you've commanded all of mankind. Those seven commandments, which are namely, number one, to believe in God; number two, not to curse God; number three, not to kill; number four, not to steal; number five, not to commit adultery; number six, to treat animals nicely; and number seven, to uphold courts of justice. Please bless the City Council with the light, and the understanding, and the wisdom to uphold all of these seven commandments, from the first all the way to the last, and let us all say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Rabbi, and again, our regards to Rabbi Horowitz.
Please remain standing as we salute our flag. Place your hand over your heart and stay with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. And, Madam City Clerk, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Comachero?
Here.
Councilmember Nigar is absent. Councilmember Ron?
I am here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Mayor Edwards?
Here. We are honored this evening to have members and guests from our sister city, excuse me, Dyson, Japan, and we have certificates for them, so Tracy Frick, would you like to bring them forward? And I'm going to go ahead and I'll read you the names of our honored guests. Mayor, the mayor of Dyson, Hiroori Takaguchi could not be here, but we have with us Yoichi Sagutani, he's the Dyson Council Chairman, good evening, and Michi Yoshihara, Dyson Council Vice Chair, go girls, Kozo Kaneka, Dyson City Sister, or Sister City Liaison. So, Kozo's always the one with the camera, so he's wonderful to help us host. So, I am going to bring these down and make a personal presentation right now. Is there anyone here who's come farther than Japan? Well, you guys win. You've come the farthest. So first, we have the certificate for Mayor Hiroori Takaguchi, and if you could deliver that for us, thank you very much. This is for you, Yoichi Sugatani. Mrs. Michi Yoshihara, Council Vice Chair.
Thank you.
And then finally, Kozo, you have to come up. And this is for Kozo, Kozo's really part of the family, Kozo Kaneko.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we're so honored to have you here, thank you so much. We really value our relationship with Dyson, our sister city relationship, and if you have a gift for the city, I will accept, thank you. And would you like to say a few words? We'd love to have you speak if you can.
Thank you, Kozo. Thank you, man.
I am chairperson of Dyson Council, Yoichi Sugatani, who was a town of Dyson, Japan, which is a sister city of Temecula. We are honored to be attending the council meeting tonight. We just arrived in Temecula today, and we'll stay with the host family for five days. We are excited about learning of your beautiful community, and making new friends. On December 1st, we attending the Christmas Parade. We look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We look forward to seeing you at the parade also.[508.12][508.12](applause) So, they just arrived today, and so imagine, just coming in that distance, landing today, and, you know, being able to, I will not be speaking Japanese this evening, so thank you very much. So, Jeff?
Kozo, my friend, how many years has it been now that you've been leading a delegation here to our city?
Fifty, perhaps.
Fifty? A lot of times. You're always welcome here.
Yes.
Twenty-four years.
Twenty-four years.
Long time. Good to see you, as always.
And so you will be participating with us in the Christmas Parade, so we're very excited about that, and we know that your hosts, your hospitality hosts are going to keep you very busy while you're here, so we look forward to seeing you again as you come back to City Hall. And so, thank you, and we'll all definitely see you at the parade, so.[567.91][567.91](applause) All right, our next presentation is a very special one, and this is for Invictus Games participant Sarah Rutter, and we feel like she's really part of our family as well. So she has, again, come back to Temecula, bringing medals for her participation in the Invictus Games. So, I don't know, is Sarah here this evening? There she is. You continue to make us very proud. So, here, you want to take this one down to her. So, Mayor Pro Tem Ron is going to be bringing that down to you, so tell us, tell us what happened this year.
This year, I trained a lot harder. I'm down a lot more pounds than last year, and I PR'd every event except my powerlifting. So, found out after that I'm the 10th fastest in the world now.
Wow.[635.66][635.66](applause) Proud of you, and, you know, those games are so important and so meaningful for so many, so we are absolutely thrilled that you take Temecula's heart and name with you when you travel like that, and you participate, and you win, and even if you didn't win, we'd still love you anyway, but thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm actually bringing under, I've raised 21,000 to bring combat wounded vets here to Temecula, and I'm going to do three workouts a day for three days, and at the end of it, they can choose which gym that they enjoyed the most, and we'll pay for a year membership.
Oh, that is awesome, so it's all for the best cause, I mean-
Fitness and family is what saved my life.
Yeah, well, and we're so happy, and you know you're part of the family, so-
Thank you very much.
Don't hesitate to call us, you know, we can be helpful to you in any way, and thank you for what you're doing for our wounded heroes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.[697.25][697.25](applause) Okay, we're going to keep Mayor Pro Tem Ron hopping tonight, so now, Conservatory of Music members, participants, come on down, and I'm going to read this one. As they're coming down, this is City of Temecula Certificate of Recognition, presented on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of the City of Temecula, to Temecula Conservatory of Music. The City Council is proud to present the Certificate of Recognition to Temecula Conservatory of Music. The Youth Orchestra and Chamber Orchestra received a superior rating at the yearly orchestra competition at Disneyland in the spring of 2017. They submitted the recording of this performance to the Carnegie Hall Music Festival judges, and both orchestras were accepted into the Spring 2019 Carnegie Hall Music Festival Competition. It's amazing. So, on behalf of the City Council and the City of Temecula, we congratulate you on this huge achievement, and we know that you're going to take the Temecula's name with you, and you're also going to make us very, very proud. So, step up and tell us a little bit, and Mayor Pro Tem Ron will run right down there.[778.12][778.12](laughing)
Well, I moved here from New Mexico about five years ago, and quickly lost my job, and it's about three months, but I started leaning back on my musical background, and I thought, you know, it would be fantastic, it would be to have a musical school where every student in the orchestra had a private teacher, where we could make it just a place of excellence. And so we started that, and it's just gotten bigger and bigger, and better and better, and so now we have three orchestras. And we started out of our house, now we are located just around the corner here, and we have over 120 students, and so we're just excited, we love Temecula, and so we've, that's what we call ourselves, the Temecula Conservatory of Music.
I'm so glad you lost your job.
Yeah, me too.[832.75][832.75](laughing)
You know, music is something that you can take with you, whether you end up being a professional musician, playing in an orchestra professionally, or in the studio, or anything, you can take music with you wherever you go, and it gives you an instant connection to the place that you, you know, where you end up, because you can always join a choir, you can join the local symphonic orchestra, so you will always have friends through your music, so it's the easiest thing to carry with you through life, and, you know, you can always be the, you know, the most fun person at the party, too, so. On behalf of the City of Temecula, thank you so much, we're so proud of you, and you know, you'll have to come back and report-
Absolutely.
And let us know how it was. Carnegie Hall is, it's a benchmark, you know, it's a milestone and a benchmark, and for as young as some of you are, well, for all of you, but it's an amazing achievement to be there, so we want to know all about it.
Absolutely.
So, congratulations, and here is your certificate. Okay, so now we have a presentation of recognition for the Temecula Valley Balloon and Wine Festival. Seems to get bigger and better every year. Really puts Temecula's name out there, so here it is, let me read this to you. Certificate of Recognition for the Temecula Valley Balloon and Wine Festival. Temecula Valley Balloon and Wine Festival was launched in the spring of 1984 from the Rancho California Plaza, with the aim to incorporate the area's natural attractions, such as wine tasting, culinary presentations, and entertainment. The festival relocated to other cities, or other sites, other sites, throughout the years to accommodate its growth, and in 1989, was moved to its current location at Lake Skinner. The mission of the festival is to enhance the charitable, cultural, educational, and economic development of the region. Visitors to the festival bring business to our community and surrounding areas, and some of the proceeds from the event are donated to community organizations. The Temecula Valley Balloon and Wine Festival is a recipient of 27 international festivals and events association awards, including awards for Best Volunteer Program, Press and Media Relations Campaigns, and Social Media Campaigns. We thank the Temecula Valley Balloon and Wine Festival, their many contributions to the City of Temecula, and for 35 years of providing this key signature event for Temecula and the surrounding communities. And, anywhere you go, you mentioned Temecula, and almost the first thing that is repeated back to you is, oh, the Balloon and Wine Festival. Even the, one of the judges on The Voice constantly talks about-
Sean.
Yeah, talks about the Balloon and Wine Festival, so it has helped to put Temecula on the map, and we only wish you continued success. So, go ahead and tell us what's in store.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We wanted to present this to you.
Oh, that's a beauty.
Your support, and your partnership with us, we're so grateful to be a part of this city, and a part of our economic development. And I think you, Ms. Mayor, said it eloquently, I'm not sure there's anything more for me to say, except thank you very much. We look forward to this coming year, we're going to light it up, 35th anniversary, and we're really excited.
How many visitors do we think?
Between 36 and 45,000.
Wow, it's amazing.
Yeah, the numbers are really astounding, what we can offer back to the community as far as local wineries, and hotels, and the money that's put back into our community.
Do you know who your headliners are for this coming year?
Not yet.
Or next year, I guess, not yet?
Not yet.
Well, we appreciate everything that Balloon and Wine has done, and if anybody in here, or listening, watching on TV, has not been to the Balloon and Wine Festival, you need to go, because it's unique in Southern California, and it is the best one anywhere, as the awards demonstrate. So, thank you on behalf of the City of Temecula for all that you have done to promote our city and our region, so thank you.
Thank you for having us.[1104.83][1104.83](applause)
And one more, have one more for the Goat and Vine. So come on up, don't be shy. Goat and Vine, oh my goodness, it's wonderful. So, this is a certificate of recognition for the Goat and Vine. City of Temecula congratulates the Goat and Vine Restaurant for winning the Small slash Emerging Enterprise Award in the Inland Empire Spirit of the Entrepreneur Gala. The Spirit of the Entrepreneurial Awards Program recognizes and celebrates the accomplishments of the Inland Empire's top entrepreneurial business leaders. Nominees are chosen for qualifications, including innovation in their industry, possessing strong leadership skills, achieving significant financial performance, and exhibiting personal integrity and values. There's nothing about food in here.[1167.33][1167.33](laughing)
It's good.
But we know it's really good. This year's winners were selected from 30 entrepreneurs representing 27 companies. We're proud to present the Certificate of Recognition to the Goat and Vine for receiving this prestigious award, and we wish them continued success in their future endeavors. So we have to know what set you apart from those 27, from the 30 competitors, so, thank you.
I'm still trying to figure that out as well. And honestly, it was incredibly humbling to accept this award, incredibly grateful to the City of Temecula for even nominating us, that was kind of a shock in and of itself. It was a really fun experience to kind of walk through, to be kind of grilled by all the judges there, and then just attend the event. It was, I think, even more special than what we had kind of anticipated, and then to show up and actually win was even more, more crazy. But, just so grateful to all of you, the City of Temecula, for your service to our city, for what has been created here, what you continue to maintain and continue to grow. We're just so proud to do business here. It's a really special city. My wife and I get to raise our kids here and do business here, it's, I mean, we kind of pinch ourselves going to work every day. I get to work with fine people like Nathan Rivera, right next to me here. So proud of our team, and proud of our community, and grateful for the support that the city gives us.
Well, we're so honored to have you here in Temecula, and, you know, I will allow Councilmember Comachero to tell you what we say about the City of Temecula, when you love Temecula.
It loves you back.
It loves you back, and so you're experiencing that now.
Absolutely.
So, now you have a year's reign as the, you know, as the top, right? So, you know, are you required to wear tiaras, or, you know, anything like that?
You know, it's a really special program, we've kind of learned more about it as we get into it, but Michael Stoll, who kind of founded it and runs it, is running it through the university there, as a means to give back, entrepreneurially speaking, to the up-and-coming entrepreneurs, or the students of the Cal State San Bernardino. So, I know there's going to be some involvement on our part over the next year, and I look forward to it, it'll be a lot of fun. Coaching and mentoring is awesome.
Yeah, we love that.
It's fun to give back, so we look forward to being able to participate in that way.
Well, thank you, and have a wonderful year. Maybe you need to come back after the end of your reign, and kind of give us a recap of the memorable things that happened in your mentoring process. We love hearing about successes with students.
Awesome, absolutely.
So, congratulations, we're very, very proud of you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we can move along. Do we have any public comments?
We do, Madam Mayor, we have one speaker.
All right. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the City Council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the City Council on an item listed on the consent calendar, or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with the City Clerk prior to the City Council addressing public comments, and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filed with the City Clerk prior to the City Council addressing that item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes.
Madam Mayor, our one and only speaker is Scott Sharpen.
Good evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and City Council Members and City Officials. Thank you for the opportunity for me to speak here tonight, and what I wanted to do is introduce myself. My name is Scott Sharpen, and I'm a pastor at Rock Valley Church in Murrieta, and I also just wanted to introduce a ministry that we run, that I also run separate from Rock Valley Church, but it's called Go Mobile for Life, and it is a mobile pregnancy clinic. You may have seen our 31-foot RV, it's got a picture of a woman's face on it, and we talk about on the side, free pregnancy tests and ultrasounds, and the purpose for that is a community service for women. It's interesting that about half of all pregnancies in this country are unplanned, and so when a woman has a pregnancy and wasn't expecting it, there's a whole series of emotions, and often economic and other challenges that they have, and so what we want to do is catch women who are in pregnancy that they may not have desired, and give them information, give them tools, and just talk about where they're at, and also, part of that's giving them information like an ultrasound. So we are a pro-life ministry, we do not refer for or provide abortions, but we want to show a woman life in the womb and have her choose life. And so as part of that endeavor, we solicit donors and other people in the community to support what we're doing. We don't take any government funding at all, and we rely strictly on donations from private individuals, or churches, or other organizations, and so what I wanted to do tonight is respectfully invite you, Honorable Mayor, as well as the City Council Members and other City officials who may want to come to an annual benefit fundraiser, and if you're going to have a fundraiser and you want a nice event, you do it in Temecula Wine Country, right? So it's going to be at Wilson Creek Winery, it's going to be on Saturday, February 24th. I have some save the date cards, and if, Randy, if it's okay if I give these to you for the City officials and the Council Members, I've also got my business card here. Our guest speaker is Pam Tebow, the mother of Tim Tebow, and she's got quite a wonderful story about her son, Tim, as it relates to choosing life for him, and there's a lot of people who are glad she did choose life, because he has done a lot of good things for our country, and for football, and for the Christian community, and so if you want to learn more about our ministry, it's gomobileforlife.org, and thank you for your time.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
What's your service area?
We are licensed, we're a licensed pregnancy clinic with the California Department of Health, and we can operate anywhere within Riverside County, so we have business licenses from Riverside, Corona, Lake Elsinore, Menifee, Temecula, as well as Murrieta, so we can operate anywhere in those areas.
And so when you're doing this, are you parking at a, like a partner church, or are you parking at the hospital, or where are you?
We parked on Temecula Parkway at the Walmart for a while, and so that's a good, good visible location. We've also parked in places like, in Lake Elsinore, we park on Main Street, which is a pretty busy thoroughfare.
Looking for high visibility, then?
High visibility, where people can see the unit, and come and receive services. And again, everything we offer the women, and some men who come, not that the men are pregnant-
Right.
-but with the ladies, and it's all free, it's all free, no cost to them.
Well, that's wonderful, so we'll make sure that we-
Yeah, so we would love for you to come and show your support for the cause of women, babies, and life in our community.
Thank you very much, it's a wonderful service.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. City Council reports, anything? I don't have any names in the queue, thank you very much. So, moving on to consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the City Council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Number two, approve the action minutes of November 14th, 2017. Number three, approve the list of demands. Number four, adopt tax advantaged bonds, post issuance compliance procedures, and continuing disclosure compliance procedures for bonds issued by city and related entities. Number five, adopt ordinance 17-13, allowing private traffic control and direction on public streets, subject to certain terms and conditions, this is the second reading. Number six, approve the Sixth Amendment to the franchise agreement with CRNR Incorporated. Number seven, approve an agreement for minor maintenance services with countywide Mechanical Systems, Inc., for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning HVAC maintenance services for fiscal year 2017-18. And that's all.
Move the consent calendar.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes, thank you. And that is unanimous with Mike Nigar absent. Okay, so I am going to recess the City Council meeting to the scheduled meeting of the Temecula Community Services District.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order, Madam Clerk, would you take the roll, please?
Director Edwards?
Here.
Director Nigar is absent, Director Ron?
Here.
Director Stewart?
Here.
And President Comachero?
Here. Do we have any public comment on this part of the meeting?
We do not.
No, seeing none, we'll move on. We have one item only under the consent calendar. Item eight, approve the action minutes for November 14th, 2017.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second, please cast your votes. That motion- That motion does carry unanimously. Mr. Hawkins, got anything for us tonight?
Absolutely, Mr.
I knew you would.
Yes, I do. You know, I really love this time of the year and as you are aware, something that will provide year-round fun is the reopening of the Nicholas Road Park Playground with the Pirate Ship theme and that's tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. And then on Friday, December 1st, our community pride will certainly be on display as the Santa's Electric Light Parade will light up Old Town at 7:00 p.m. with over 90 colorful entries, including 10 marching bands. And finally, on the following Friday, and that's December 8th, from 5:00 to 8:30 p.m., Penny Pickles Workshop will provide winter fun and whimsy for all ages at the annual Winter Wonderland Event. So, tell a friend, Temecula is definitely the destination place for the holidays. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Kevin. Mr. General Manager, anything?
Hi, Mr. President.
Hey, do we have any board member comments?
I would just like to thank Director Hawkins for a beautiful tree lighting ceremony last night at the Duck Pond, which was well attended and a good time was had by all. And yes, Zach acted as the emcee and it was wonderful.
I just wanted to ask one quick question of a member in our audience, Mr. Brekovich. Every year, you guys have an entry into our light parade from CRNR and you dress up one of your trucks and lights. Are we going to get to have fun with that again this year? Wonderful. That is by far, you know, the fire engines, everybody goes through. Your trucks get more applause than just about anybody. I don't know what it is about the trash trucks, but it's just seeing up in the Christmas lights. People love it, so looking forward to seeing that again. Thanks.
Certainly gets more attention than we do and rightfully so. Anything else? Okay, seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn to December 12th.
So, moved. Second.
Any objection?
Nope.
We are adjourned.
Okay, I am going to call to order the meeting for the Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency. Let the roll call indicate that Councilmember Nigar is absent. Do we have any public comments? Nothing on Sarda for public comments, so we will move on to the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under consent are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency request specific items be removed from the Consent Calendar for separate action. Item number nine, approve the action minutes of November 14th, 2017.
Move approval of the minutes.
Second.
And that is unanimous with Councilmember Nigar absent. Do we have any reports?
Nothing further tonight.
Members? Nothing? All right, so I will accept a motion for adjournment.
So, moved. Second.
We need to adjourn to the 12th at 3:00 p.m.
All right, to Tuesday, December 12th at 3:00 p.m. in the City Council Chambers. And note that is an earlier time than the normal. So, I have a motion and a second for that. And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, so moving on, we are right into the Temecula, back to the Temecula City Council meeting. And so, I have to, I'll tap it in to reconvene. So, anything? Departments, nothing? Commission report? You have to talk about the tree lighting.
Most definitely. So, I just wanted to say how proud I am of our city for kicking off the holidays the way we do. It's a great tradition and that tree lighting last night is something that we look forward to. I know the whole community does. And we've got the parade this week and then next Monday, our commission will be judging the home decorating contest. And then we lead bus tours as well throughout all those homes in the city, which I know are just a hit. So, this time of year is just a great time to be here.
So, Zach, when, in the old days, when the long timers used to go, the councilmembers used to judge the competition, people would be waiting out in front of their homes with barbecues ablaze and food and candy and chocolates and there's small children singing. And so, do you, you know, have any of that going on now?
That continues to this day. There's a, chocolate chip cookies are a favorite. Everyone wants to bring us cookies and snacks and sort of try to persuade us, but we're, we stick to our rubric and.
You're pretty hard line on that, are you?
Yeah.
Well, it's okay to take advantage, you know, just don't let that blind your, you know, don't let you blind you to the.
The lights do the blinding.
Yeah, exactly.
Some of them are very bright.
Yeah, all right, thank you. Mr. Telesio?
As you know, last week, we entertained maybe 100, 80 to 100 people reviewing the Altera Project and very well behaved as usual as we expected. Everything went smoothly. We had about 30 speakers broken down, nine against 24. And we, again, entertained the review and recognition to send it on to the council in the near future. And I think you'll like it.
So, that's the meeting that we have scheduled for December the 12th.
For 3:00.
Yes, we have moved it to 3:00 in the afternoon to accommodate, you know, maybe another 30 speakers. So, we are ready to hear that project. So, thank you, Mr. Telesio. And Mr. Hagel?
Nothing new tonight, Madam Mayor.
Oh, man, I was counting on you, Mr. Hagel. All right, so anything, members? Councilmembers? No? Mr. City Manager?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Oh, I knew you were going to say that. All right, nothing for the City Manager's report. Peter, anything?
No.
Move adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we stand adjourned.
Just did the 12th though at 3:00.